County Planning Commission to order, please. Would you stand with me, please? And Richie, would you lead the prayer tonight and lead the prayer?
By with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and thank you for our blessings, Heavenly Father, and we thank you that we come here and do the business of our county. We pray that what we do and what we say will be what you would have us to do and say. And we pray especially tonight for Dale, for Dale, his family, Heavenly Father, and for his wife, and we pray that it's safety for them to come home and others in this county. In the last few days, Heavenly Father, there's been tragedies and loss of life, and we pray that you'd just be with them. You'd comfort them, Heavenly Father, as long as you can. Pray that you continue that you'd be with us tonight in our meeting, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the people for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They be seated. Come on over, please, ma'am.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Richie Boland.
Yes.
Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
President.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Steve Sandlin.
Here.
Mike Bott.
Here.
Vincent Windrow. Craig Lynch.
Present.
We have a quorum.
All right. You have, David's not here, you have David's report here to, on the desk, you can look at it. If you have any questions, Eric will do it. Eric's sitting in for Dale. Dale's wife had some medical problems in Arizona, is that correct, Dave?
Say that again, sir.
Dale's wife had some medical problems?
Yes, she did. Without going into just a whole lot of detail, she had gotten ill while they were out in Arizona on vacation, and basically she had to have a pacemaker installed out in Arizona. The surgery went well. They were supposed to be home this past weekend, of course, with their medical issues, the doctors weren't going to let her travel. However, again, the surgery went well, and the doctors did say that she could travel home. They should be coming home tonight, and as long as everything goes well, we're hoping Dale will be back in the office tomorrow. But obviously, our thoughts and prayers are with them as they travel back, and we're thankful that they were able to take care of the things they did while they were there.
Okay. Anytime withdrawn or deferred?
No, sir.
Okay, we have a public hearing tonight on the Rutherford County Comprehensive Plan. Doug, would you like to start?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just, I have just a few opening comments. Of course, this is the second public hearing we've had before the Planning Commission on our comprehensive plan. You recall, our first public hearing was back on January 24th of this year. We had a few people get up to speak, but after those folks spoke, there were some concerns that were brought up and some things that we still needed to look into, I believe. So the Planning Commission asked us to go ahead and have another public input meeting, which we did do. We had that on February the 10th, and we had it over at Consolidated Utilities Office over there on New Salem Road. It was a very well-attended meeting. I estimate somewhere between 50 to 75 people were there. It was, again, very well-attended. It was very productive. We had a lot of questions and a lot of comments that were, that were made at that meeting. Many of the, a lot of people had questions, really, that were just answered right there. A lot of the comments really kind of fell into, we kind of looked at them, and they kind of fell into one of three or four categories. One of them, some of them were dealt with, a lot of, with the new regulations that we're working on right now with the zoning and how this plan related to the zoning and what changes we could expect from, from that process. There was also some questions about how this would affect annexation and those kind of issues. Also, there were several questions about the future land use map itself, and we'll talk about that here in just a few minutes. But one of the biggest concerns that we've heard, you know, either at that meeting and outside of that meeting, had to deal with the, the conservation areas that we had identified on the plan. If we could go ahead and pull up that map. This, this is the original, yeah. You see the, this is the, the map that's in your books at this time. Of course, you can see, I'm going to try to point out the items here while I'm kind of turned around, but some of the concerns that we had, the most comments about were this area right through here and then this area, I don't know if I can go get it or not with the camera right there, but this area right up here, those darker green areas, those were conservation areas. When the land use model was, was done by the consultants, essentially what they were looking at are, they were looking at different factors such as the slope, the availability of infrastructure, those kind of things. And this particular category, the dark green on this map, was identified as areas of a density, recommended density of one unit per five acres. There was a lot of concern about that, and there was, a possible remedy to that, so to speak, was someone had suggested, and which I thought was a good idea, that if, if the property in those areas, and this is something that we even discussed with the consultant team, that we understood that there would be properties in these areas that probably didn't suffer from excessive slope or lack of infrastructure, we would allow those to develop at a slightly higher density, say, one unit per acre, consistent with the rural area, which is the lighter green on that map. Since that time, what, and staff, go ahead and pull up the other map, thank you. Staff has made a few changes to the map. This is pretty much the same map with just a, with a few changes, we'll kind of go over those. But you can see on this map, the conservation area that was here and then the other one on the, the far west part of Rutherford County, those have been changed from, at least recommended change at this point, and this is just a staff recommendation, but those were changed from the conservation areas to a rural density. And really, it's going to accomplish the same thing, I believe, because what I believe would be a good solution here is rather than say, okay, you can go one unit to five acres, but if your property meets certain criteria, then you can develop at a higher density. Now essentially what we're going to say is, okay, you're allowed a slightly higher density, one unit to, one unit per acre, however, if you don't meet certain criteria, then you can't develop at that. And that can be throughout the rural area or even the suburban area, for that matter. That, that's something that, that I believe is, is a, is a good change. And that was one of the, one of the primary concerns we had with the land use map during this time. A couple of other things on here that you'll see. We have had some concerns, especially with this, with these employment nodes, these dark, these purple nodes here, especially this one right up in this area. This is the Jefferson Pike 840 area, also encompassing Mona Road. We have received a, a number of concerns about that, not so much that it's there, but the, the size of the area. Now, of course, I want to make sure that people understand a couple of things. First of all, this map, even if it's adopted, this map is not a future zoning map, okay? All this map is doing is making recommended land uses for the future. It's not, if this is approved tonight, the zoning of the property tomorrow is going to be the same as it is today. What this plan is meant to do, it's not meant to be parcel-specific. It's not meant to say, okay, all the property identified, say, in one of these nodes, either this one, this, or this one up here, and there is another one, again, kind of blocked by the camera, so I can't hit that one, but really what that is saying is that we anticipate that as infrastructure is more, becomes more available in these areas, that we would anticipate those kind of uses. I don't anticipate that we're going to see just, just immediately, we're going to start seeing just a, just a, an onslaught, if you will, of more intense type development there. Either some, some people think it's going to be more of an industrial park atmosphere, which would, it could include that, but it could also include like professional office parks, different kind of things like that. It's not locking it into just a specific land use. So I just want to make sure that, that, that people understand that. Also, and this is a point I believe is well-taken as well, this document is going to be an evolving document. I mean, it's not meant to be approved tonight, and then it just stays that way for the next five, 10, 15 years. There are going to be things that are going to come up that we have not foreseen, there are going to be things that we're going to have to revisit, and as time goes on, you know, I fully anticipate that in five years, this plan is probably going to look different than it looks tonight. And that's just part of any planning process of any planning document. So as time goes on, if changes need to be made, those are changes that can be brought to the Planning Commission for their recommendation and approval, and if this is, if this is adopted by the County Commission, then it can be brought to them for their approval as well. So I just want to make those points while I, while I've got the floor here. The last thing I did want to talk a little bit about, while we were looking at the, the conservation areas and some of these other concerns that we had, the original map showed a little bit of the urban area, kind of spilling outside of the urban growth boundary here to the southeast of the city going toward Epsom Hill Road. After looking at that and, and discussing it a little bit amongst staff, we felt that maybe, as further out to our discussion purposes, would it make more sense to keep the urban area within the urban growth boundary and just make that more of a suburban area between the Epsom Hill Road interchange and the existing urban growth boundary? Again, we want, we put that out there for discussion more, more than anything, just for, for you to, to, to kind of take in and let us know what your thoughts are. We also received some inquiries about an additional rural node out in here. This is Bradyville Pike, Big Springs Road, and Cripple Creek area. Really, there's not any nodes in that area, but there is sufficient water, as we understand it, out in that area to accommodate some possible future growth, so we have added that node there. But besides those issues we discussed, this map is pretty much identical to the map that is in your document and the first map that you had on the screen before you. So that's really the discussion that I wanted to bring up tonight. I know there's a number of people here in the audience, I'm sure that some of them would like to speak, but at this point, I'll be willing to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Before we open up the public hearing, is there any comments or anything the Planning Commission would like to make? We're going, okay, we're going to open it up to a public hearing. First thing I'd like to say is, Mr. Johns, I want to thank you on behalf of the Planning Commission, and on behalf of Mayor Burgess, I want to thank you and your committee for all the time and the hard work and that you've put in on this. It's been a lot, it's been time-consuming, and Mike, I know it has, I know you put a lot of time on this, and we thank you for that. We do thank you for that. We want to open it up to a public hearing, we want everybody to speak. We'd like if you could keep your comments to around three minutes and then to be considerate of your neighbor, so he can come up and speak, and then if you want to speak again, just get back at the end of the line, come up for another three minutes. We, we want to hear everything you've got to say, but we're going to open up the public hearing now, and anyone who wishes to speak, please come forward. Yes, ma'am, please, right here. We need your name, we need everybody's name that comes forward.
I'm Diane Hendricks, and I live up in that Mona Road area, and we have a real peaceful community now. I went around, I talked to some of the neighbors today, I read in the paper today that this was the hearing. So I'm going all afternoon to different neighbors, and of course, they're coming home from school. They didn't know anything about it, but they're all the same thing, is like, we moved from Antioch to Laverne out here, how far do we have to keep moving to get away from what you're putting on the long-range plan of our yard? People selling their houses now, all you need is that purple area on there, right across the road from them. They're going to have a harder time selling that property than they did before when it was R-15. It's taken, it'll take the quality of life away from that area. It's peaceful, the golf course is back there. We expected the development along the interstate, you know, up by 840, up at Jefferson Pike, but not to come as far back as it is and as wide of an area as it is. We go there, the deer are there. I mean, it's just a great place to live, it's a great place to raise our children. And I think with, even though it may not be fruition for five years to 10 years, there's family farms back there. I mean, there's a lot of history in the Mona community that could be destroyed depending on what even comes in there. We don't really want to see office buildings, industry warehouses. There's a truck lot up there that somebody was developing right off Jefferson Pike. We get to drive by a gravel pit every day with tractor-trailer trucks parked. That's not what we envisioned when we moved out there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jan Eddy, and I live in the Mona Road area as well. What Diane says is true. We moved from Laverne, we had many options, we looked at homes that backed up to warehouses. We don't want that. We, I used to work down in Nashville, I moved and drove 24 for an hour and a half every day because I wanted to go home to the peace. We don't want to see that on our corner. We don't want to have to pull out, it's a little tiny area, to have to pull out and wait for office people and warehouses and whatever else, plant factories, and it will destroy our, our quality of life out there, and that's what we bought when we went out there. Thank you. Jan, Eddy.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Buddy Gamble. I've got a cold, so excuse that, but I live out at Christiana area, and I had spoken the meeting prior to this about having one of those purple nodes put out on 231 South. Mr. Demossi had, was, I think, pretty much over that meeting in that particular time, and he inferred that we didn't have one on 231 North, and it really didn't think that 231 South probably wouldn't qualify to have one out there. But there's no comparison to the traffic and the building on the south side of Murfreesboro than it is on that north side, 231. Our traffic is, the four lane is full, and it's probably one of the heaviest-traveled roads in Rutherford County that's not an interstate, or interstate-like highway. But I would certainly love for the Planning Commission to consider putting a commercial industrial node on the south side out there, somewhere on 231 South. The land is sparsely residential, homes out there, and it'd be an ideal place. Of course, the worst thing out there, we don't have a septic system-type thing for the sewers, but I think it was mentioned that they will allow step systems sometime for big industrial developments. And, but I'd certainly think that we need to look about putting industrial, commercial-type zoning somewhere there on 231 South. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, sir.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Larry Sims with Sims Rogers. I mentioned earlier, I just want to kind of bring you up to speed again, what we're trying to do on Rooker Road, kind of touches on what Mr. Gamble was talking about. We've had a neighborhood meeting, meeting with some of the neighbors out there, and we're trying to propose an industrial park off of Rooker Road, and it backs up to the quarry. That's in the Urban Growth Boundary District for the city of Murfreesboro. I've had several meetings with him and Joseph Adelat. I think Joseph thinks it's a pretty good plan, sewers out there, water's out there. Of course, we had, we know we'd have to upgrade a new road, Rooker Road, or bring a new road in through the rock quarry. About three to four owners, we can assemble from 300 to 500 acres, and do a nice industrial park, you need about 300 to 500 acres. So in the logistics, everything, the transportation, what's going on, that's a nice area to think about, and, and you're absolutely right, these are the areas that you need to be thinking about, maybe for an industrial park. There's one area we also kicked around, the Green family, out on Jefferson Pike, if you go on 231 across the interstate towards Smyrna, it's there on the right, there's a couple of property owners, had probably about 400 acres. We've also talked to them a little bit about doing an industrial park. Of course, a lot of that will having to do with a sewer coming through Smyrna, and I think they're talking about widening the road and putting it in. So you kick these ideas around, there's two pretty good areas for an industrial park. The one, about I-840 works out so well. Nashville is considered that that's kind of the breaking point of anybody that wants to be in Davidson County, they'll definitely come down to I-840, we know that. We've heard some, a couple of meetings. So it really is surprising, both of them are really outstanding locations to do that, maybe both are to be considered. Thank you.
All right, thanks, sir. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening. I'm Brick Murfree. My firm sent a letter back in February to Mr., Mr. Johns, the chairman of the committee, regarding this conservation designation. I just wanted to say thanks to everybody who worked with us and, and, you know, took time out of their day to, to discuss that, that issue. I'm not really speaking on behalf of my clients, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you and I appreciate it. So that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
All right, thanks, sir.
Good evening. My name is Susan Allen. I live on Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro, and I was a member of the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. And just as a reminder, to go back to what this comprehensive plan was all about, I went to the county website, to the Comprehensive Plan page, and I just want to read what this is all about, so, you know, the focus, you, you have it in focus. "The comprehensive plan is a major undertaking and will become the policy foundation for all future planning in the unincorporated areas of Rutherford County. A comprehensive plan is a mean, a means of establishing a long-term community vision by looking 15 to 20 years into the future, developing needs, setting goals and objectives, and formulating policies that direct future development to be consistent with that vision. Why do we plan? The purpose of doing a plan is to ensure an overall quality of life standard to be maintained and improved in the future. This is accomplished by identifying the issues the community faces and finding ways to address those issues in the coming years. Planning allows us to take a look at where the community has been, how it got to this point, where it wants to go, and how it can get there. Essentially, planning allows a community to prepare for change rather than to react for it, and that's what you're all going to decide with the, the plan that's, you've been given tonight. While we cannot deny the desire for unrestricted property rights or the desire to protect historic agricultural and open spaces, our task in steering this comprehensive plan was to focus on reaching a consensus of opinion that was in the best interest of all concerned. It was not an easy task because we're trying to essentially correct course in the middle of things. I think we all want Rutherford County, County to be economically competitive in the 21st century. Our sensible land use and smart, smart growth are central to that goal. Concerning the, the change of the, the conservation area, I understand the, the reasoning behind it, but since the Steering Committee forwarded a plan that included the conservation area, I would like to see more discussion on whether or not that is or is not the best policy. The reason I question doing away with conservation area and making it one acre, one house per acre, is I'm not sure how the, how the sensitive areas are going to be defined. If we have a conservation area, perhaps the, a person wanting to develop a lot in that area would have to come to the planning department and get, you know, make it known that they want to develop it, and then a process could be in place to determine whether or not that land is or is not suitable based on the drainage and slope. So, and that may be something that will be determined in the zoning process and the land use, but I question if we should change it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir.
This plan was set up, and we tried to do our best. I don't think we answered all the questions, we never will. We're trying to look into the future about 10 or 20 years, and that's impossible. I don't think we answered all the questions, I think we need to consider them, whether five acres, one acre, or how many acres it takes to build a house, that's up to this Planning Commission. We hadn't taken any of your authority away from you. It belongs to you. It belongs to the County Commission. We don't want any of your authority. We don't want that responsibility. I hope you'll consider them, Mr. Murphy. I hope you'll consider any other problems come up with people. All of it, everything we've done is going to affect somebody's property unless you're already inside of a city. Unfortunately, I don't own anything outside of the cities. Everything I own is inside the city limits of Smyrna. So that's not me. I hope for the best. I hope 20 years from now, I may not be here. But I hope Rutherford County will look better. I hope it's not like one, one town down in the western edge of Rutherford County, which is poor planning, I think, on their part. Maybe no planning, and y'all know what I'm talking about without naming names. But we want to do a little better than that. We want something 20 years from now that looks, we'd be a little pleased with, and let's hope we get it.
All right, thanks, sir. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening. My name's Charles Thomas, and I live on Christiane Hoover Gap Road. I guess my main concern is, if this is adopted, is what does it do to our property tax? Is this going to be almost assured property tax increase for the property owners of Rutherford By zone? That's my main concern now. Thank you.
All right, thanks, sir. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, yes, ma'am, come on.
And just to sum up what she had said about planning and the Planning Commission, so you know what's going to be there 15 and 20 years, if the people in our community knew that there was going to be the Economic Development Center that could have commercial and industrial and that right across the street from you, that subdivision would not have been successful that's back there. Cedar Crest, those homes wouldn't have been built there if they knew that was coming, but it wasn't. It was farmland, it was planned, it, there was a vision, and that's not the vision that these people bought into. So it's fine setting the long-range goals for these areas that may not be inhabited or have a lot of people, but give some buffer, you know, we, nobody expected it to come back that far up Mona Road from 840. We all expected with the interstate, there'd be stuff up at that end. We didn't expect it to end up in our backyards, and to say that's where development, we have other people that want development in that area, where, you know, where it's sparsely inhabited, inhabited, that's, you know, consider some of that. Consider if it was your home where you bought, and you have family that all owns these houses, and that's where you've been raised, is that what you really want across the street when, you didn't know that when you were buying? So I just ask you to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else? Anyone else wish to speak? We'll close the public hearing, bring you back to the Planning Commission for input. Yes, sir, Mr. Sandlin.
Doug, just a couple of questions about what this lady was talking about, Ms. Hendricks over in the Mona area. She was talking about Cedar Crest, and this is Area 19 we're talking about, correct?
I'm sorry, the area is what?
19. Jefferson Pike and 840, but that, that whole...
What page are you on, Steve?
What's that?
What page are you on? What page?
Well, I'm looking at this map here that's right beside...
It's number 19 on the book you have, yes.
Yeah, is that 106?
106, yeah.
Yeah, 106, because there's 107 right there. That whole purple area in 19, does that go all the way over to, to the golf course, Cedar Crest? I mean, it's, is that what she's talking about, right there?
Yeah, that is what she's talking about, that, that whole area, right through there, that purple node right there. Yes, sir.
That, that is a pretty large area.
And, and again, let me just, I'll kind of elaborate on that a little bit. Again, when this was developed, I don't personally foresee that every single property that's identified in purple is going to be some sort of an office or employment-type use. I just don't. I'd received a phone call earlier, I think, from one of the two ladies that spoke just a few minutes ago, asking, you know, would it be possible for subdivisions to go in that area? My answer was yes. I said, this really is just a, a policy map, which is suggesting that there are properties in this area that could possibly be used for employment uses. I mean, I personally wouldn't have any problem if we kind of even scaled that down a little bit, if that might give them a little bit more of a, of a comfort with that area. I understand...
Well, that's what I was going to suggest, as far as just a, and, and I don't have the, the perfect answers, but as far as a scaling down around the 840 interchange, you know, right there where... you know, right there where they assume that, we assume that, everybody else assumes one day sometime, uh, at an interchange on a four-lane interstate or scenic highway or whatever you want to say at this point, um, is going to be developed. And so, and we are looking still twenty years in the future right there of, of doing that, but I, I do agree with these folks here, and that's what the public hearing's for. If we can scale that down, and like I said, I don't have the magic number, but if we can work on that...
Yeah, and I don't have any problem with that. Uh, I mean, I, again, I understand their concerns, and I know we've talked with them a, a few times about it, uh, but, and I also want to, just to make sure everybody understands, again, that this is not, if this is approved, that the zoning in that area doesn't change. This kind of goes to the question that, that one gentleman had about property taxes and what effect this is going to have on that. The plan in and of itself really should have no impact on the property taxes. Uh, that's really done more by use of the property. Uh, this is just a, a, a list of, uh, and, and a document that makes policy statements and recommendations for future land uses. So the taxes, I'm not now, let's be, let me qualify that by saying I'm not a property assessor or an appraiser, but as I understand, the, uh, the property assessor's office, they handle the assessment of property by use as opposed to what the future land use map would say.
Another one I wanted to comment on, uh, with the folks that had come up in the public hearing here, Mr. Gamble, Mr. Sims, I think they're talking around the same area. Um, I was thinking, when Mr. Gamble came up, probably a little further out, on two thirty-one south, but, um, Mr. Sims come back in with, uh, the Rucker Road area, which is still in our urban growth boundary.
That's correct.
Um, what, what about those two locations or out in this area as far as, you know, uh, putting a node there as far as development and, and what's already there and whether, of course, I would say it would entail Rucker with, uh, um, maybe the Rock Quarry being there and, and, and I, but I don't know about further, further south on two thirty-one. It just, uh, it may make sense. I just, and this is the time that we need to be bringing these things up, so if we can discuss that a little bit.
Yeah, and let me, let me, uh, I'll try to address that. The, the Rucker Road area right there, as Mr. Sims stated, is in the urban growth boundary of Murphysboro and is identified in the, uh, the general urban, um, uh, character area. When you look at these areas, uh, I don't want the impression to go out there that, what we, when we look at these areas, when we're talking about density in these character areas, that we're only talking about residential densities. This is not meant to be a land use map in the sense that's identifying specific areas for commercial only, residential only. There are, the nodes that are there do anticipate mixed use. I'll give you, I'll give you that. But, um, th- this map is not meant to be that specific. If you look at the, if, with the plan, uh, if you go back a few pages into like page, uh, let me see here, page eighty-one in the document, it has a list of the different character areas, the general urban, suburban, rural, and then also the conservation area. Uh, in the, especially the co, the general urban and the suburban, and also the rural, uh, not so much the rural, but the, uh, the suburban and the general urban, you're really looking at, uh, you're looking at higher densities for the, the units, like for general urban, ten units an acre, for suburban, three units an acre, which is pretty much what we have now with the R fifteen. But you also see that afterward, you have point nine F A R, talking about non-residential floor area ratio. So it's anticipated that there are going to be areas within even these larger character areas. It's not saying that you just can't have commercial development anywhere but those nodes. So, you know, that area on Rucker Lane or Rucker Road, excuse me, that they're referring to, uh, you know, what they're referring to really, I think, falls into what you would see in a general urban, uh, kind of a, uh, land classification. As you're going further out, uh, two thirty-one, of course, there are a couple of nodes out that way, a couple rural nodes. You've got Christiane and you've got the Fosterville, uh, Midland a little further off the road there toward the south. But that road through there is identified really as more of a, um, a, a major urban or a suburban arterial. It's hard to see on the map exactly what that's classified as. I believe that's a, uh, it's a limited access, but it's more of an urban-type, uh, road with a four-lane road and, and, you know, Mr. Gamble was, was correct. You know, that's a, there's a lot of traffic that goes up and down that road every day. But along that line, if you look back in the document where it talks about the different types of corridors, uh, uh, again, you would expect to see along a corridor like that certain, um, non-residential type uses, and the, the document makes allowances for that. I don't necessarily know if you really have to have another node, uh, up and down two thirty-one, uh, since it's already identified as a, a corridor that could handle that kind of, uh, uh, that could possibly handle those type of uses in the future. Again, a lot of the, the development that we're talking about, especially the, as we get further and further into the future, be it over on our two thirty-one or on Mona Road, uh, no matter where we're looking, is really going to be dependent upon what infrastructure is available and what can serve the property now or in the future. Uh, I, one of the big reasons I don't think Mona Road and that area, or even the Jefferson Pike eight forty interchange will really develop necessarily anytime in the near future significantly is just because there's really a lack of infrastructure out that way. There is no sewer, at least at this point. Uh, you know, water, yeah, is, you know, is kind of limited once you start getting up further into the, the northern county, when it's outside of C U D's district. So there are other, especially when you get up to the, uh, the, the Nashville Speedway, water is an issue when you start getting up there. So, I, I don't want people to, to think just because an area may be identified in a, at a specific node, that just, that, that does not take the place of the zoning process that will have to be followed for that. Uh, if somebody brings in a, a zoning application for an area within a node and a planning commission feels it just does not make sense because there is no infrastructure there, there's really no way to support it, even though it's in a node, I don't think it's inappropriate to recommend denial of a rezoning, even if the node is saying that that kind of use should be supported there. You know, I think that's something to, to keep in mind, that this isn't just a, an automatic kind of free ride or get out of jail free card for rezonings where they just come in and they can automatically get their approval, because it's, it doesn't, uh, not meant to work that way. You know, it's not meant to replace the zoning process and all the different things that we consider for rezoning applications. That was kind of a long way to answer your question, but I, I, did you, did that take care of the questions you had? Kind of, sort of.
Will, do you have a comment?
Well, I apologize, I left my plan on the corner of my desk at home, but out of that whole book, I get more out of that map, which is basically that map, than anything else. That's what tells us, shows us everything. And I wish we had something that was a little bit more defined, because they're fairly broad strokes on, of a brush, and you can't tell, at least I couldn't, exactly how far some of these nodes are going. And I'm kind of confused because we've got a big purple area up there at Mona Road and, and, and that's getting a long ways away from interchange. And, but we're saying, that doesn't have to be commercial. But then we've got an area down here where I thought we ought to have some commercial on two thirty-one south, and there's no node at all. And, and if this is going to be a map or a guide or something, then I think it ought to be a little more defined and, 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 and if you can have commercial on two thirty-one without it being a purple node, then why is that purple node have to be that big up at Mona Road? I mean, that's part of my commission district and, and I never realized it was going way back there by the golf course. I mean, I envisioned something in the perimeter of the exchange, interchange, but, you know, I think we ought to at least shrink that node, that purple spot up there and, and if it's justified, we could always put something else. If you can do it on two thirty-one without a purple spot on the map, you could do it up there if something were justified, because these neighbors need to be assured of some buffering between these residential housings. And, because if I see a tract of land come in and there's a subdivision across the road, I think there'd be houses around the perimeter or something to break it up between houses straight to a warehouse and stuff. So, so, but I, I wish we had something as far as for these members here and the full commission whenever it gets there that's a little more defined, like, uh, like more intense nat, maps that show, uh, a, a greater definition as far as how big these nodes are. Because I don't see a node at all at like eight forty and Suffer Springs Road, but I take it at some point in time, we're going to see some sort of convenience market or something like that, want to go in there. And are you saying that it's still be allowed without any type of node being there?
Well, no, I, I think what I'm, what I'm saying is, and, and, and I want to clarify a couple of things, that, and, and we can, obviously, we can get maps that, you know, they'll only print a quadrant out at a time, but I want to make sure that everybody realizes that these maps were never meant to be parcel-specific. Okay? You know, if, you know, I don't want to get into a discussion where someone says, well, his property's in this node, mine's not, why not? You know, it's not, it's not meant for that.
You would think you would at least go down a road anyway or something like that and, be able to tell, you know, if you're going behind the golf course or in front of the golf course or, or whatever, but I, I don't know. It just, I know it's been a world of work on this, but it seems a little vague to me. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm looking for more definition myself. I, I don't know.
Yes.
Yeah, Greg, um, also, out there toward on eight forty at Ammerville. That's a pretty good size, too. That goes all the way back nearly to Burnt Knob, looks like. And, uh, that one's a pretty good-sized one, too, if you'll look at it. That's fairly good size, of course. I, I understand what you're looking at there, that you've got eight forty, which will be a creation for, for a lot of this, this growth and whatever. Uh, but, uh, you know, I can understand possibly out here on your number eighteen down this way, uh, coming down on I twenty-four, but I was just, we were just looking at this one out here towards Ammerville. Uh, I think that's what you have it listed on here as, uh, getting off eight forty there at that Ammerville exit.
Right. Yes, sir.
That's, that one's a pretty good size, too.
So you're thinking just kind of...
That might be a possibility, look at that. And while I've got the floor, let, let me just also mention, too, on Ms. Allen's statement there on the conservation area, uh, I know the night in, on February, when this was first brought up about the concerns there of removing this conservation area, and I also had concern, too, about removing that. I, I'm being one, too, that sort of, uh, liked the conservation area, uh, that we had someplace within Rutherford County. We still were looking at this. But, uh, I also understand the fact, too, that, uh, all these individual properties will be looked upon their own merit. They'll also be looked upon their own soils. Um, my background is in soils, that's where my degree is. I'm a soil and plant scientist. Uh, and I can understand by placing this within the rural area planting there, that this will be taken care of. And we can see that, uh, where you're placing one, one resident on a, on one acre at that time rather than, uh, the five acres. And, uh, I think within Rutherford County, the, the soils will determine what goes there. And I think by making this change, that'll be okay. But I'd have to mention, though, as a member of this committee, that I, uh, that I did have a little concern about removing those conservation areas. But I can see now where you're going from this change here, and I think it would be, be satisfactory, because each, each partial will stand on its own merits there. And appreciate this map as we're talking about, that this is a tool that can be used. And that's what we got to understand, is it's a tool, that when you get into the zoning, that will be the determination of what we have to do there and what we have to work with.
And if I could, uh, were you, were you finished? Okay. Uh, to further respond to Ms., uh, Ms. Allen's comment, you know, she had some, I know she had some concerns about the, the conservation areas and had said, uh, something to the effect of, you know, uh, what one criteria would be established to help protect our, uh, the, the sensitive areas. And, uh, that is something, I believe, which would be dealt with in the zoning as opposed to the comprehensive plan. So regardless, if we kept the conservation area, this document didn't really go into any details as far as what counted as a, as a cultural resource or a historical resource or anything like that. It's not really meant to get into that. That's really more of a, of subject and, uh, of the, of the zoning of the, of the property and the rules and regulations that go into that. So that would be the, the proper place, regardless of which way we go, that would be the, the proper place to, to consider that.
Okay. Anyone else? Comments? The conservation easement out there, you're talking about the, sort of moot point on that five acre, because there's a, there's a lot of land out there that it, it, it's going to be five acre, it's even going to be ten acre, fifteen acres. We, we understand that. And we don't have to upset a lot of people. It, it, the land's going to take care of itself. Now, there is some that's real good, and some of this in the conservation easement was on both sides of Highway two thirty-one. There's water, there's probably suitable soils that, it's right on the boundary right there, uh, of Bedford County. And there's a planned unit development just going over in Bedford County, just right over at the golf course that they're working on right now. It's, so, there's good land, but there's a lot of land that, uh, like you said, Bettis, that, that it's going to answer its own question. So we can call it one acre, and it's still going to be fifteen acres.
Right. And I think it's important that we maintain the rural area. As long as we continue to hold that, that source right there, uh, that can become our conservation area in what we're dealing with right there. And, and I think that's an important thing within, in Rutherford County. I know as the lady mentioned here, as she's moved and, and moved trying to find a place to stay and it continues to change on her. Sixty-two years ago, I was born here. And talk about seeing change, uh, I've seen that, too. Uh, I don't plan to move from where I'm at either and understand that, but I think it's important that we're seeing these, these efforts taken right here to protect what we got. And, and I commend the committee for the hours they put in on this, the time that's been put in on this, that, uh, we're, we're in the right direction, what we're trying to do.
Okay. Other comment? Mike?
Well, I'll pass right now.
Pass right now? Anyone else have a comment? Rhonda?
Yeah.
She could. Okay. Mike? Jeff?
Are we looking for a motion today?
Well, no, I think Mike wants to make some comment here before we...
But, but ultimately, are we looking for a motion to move on with the full planning commission?
I, I think, yeah.
But actually, this, I mean, this, this is the full planning commission, but, but...
You're talking about the full ca...
Oh, okay. Okay.
Talking about this list over here.
I'm like, whoa, this is still going to make a mission? Sorry. I understand.
Doug, sometimes we get bogged down in, in concept, and we were just discussing that while another discussion was going on. Uh, do we need to make those couple tweaks right there on that or discuss those tonight or, you know, um, can we go ahead and, and send on this concept? I mean, I, I really want these narrowed down, uh, what we just talked about. Um, and it seems like that might be the only tweaks that we're talking about at this point. Uh, if there's any more, we need to get them out here on the, on the floor, but, um, we just can't bog down in, in, in having a perfect concept. Like, uh, Ernie Johns, I still call him Commissioner Johns, uh, worked with him plenty, uh, many years on the county commission, and, uh, and, and I didn't get my opportunity to say thank you, uh, Mr. Johnson. Y'all have done a lot of hard work here, uh, with the committee and everything on this, and, and I don't want to, uh, bog it down from proceeding on. But, uh, you know, if, if we, if there's some things that we need to tweak on it and get it tweaked before we send it, we definitely want to do that. But if y'all can do this and we send it on, uh, we'd like to go ahead and do that. But, uh, I, I think it's a good plan overall. We're never going to have a perfect plan, like, uh, Mr. Johnson said, and, and we're going to constantly have to tweak it as we see things arise, uh, when they come to planning commission and when they come to your staff and, and to you for application. We're going to, we're going to catch things as we go along and stay on top of it as we, and this county continue to grow. So with that, I'd, I'd put in form of a motion that, uh, that we send it on with the planning commission's approval with these couple of tweaks that we're talking about, if we can hammer those out right here.
Okay. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Do you want to say the motion, sir?
I'm sorry?
What was the motion?
To, to send it on now. The motion was to send it on with those tweaks or was the motion, we can tweak it later? What, how was your motion, Steve?
Motion and tweak it, scale it down. Now, we didn't give any parameters or parameters on scaling that down or what we want to scale down, but we pretty much said around the eight forty process, not so out all the way to the, to the Cedar Crest, to the golf course and area. We're talking about the immediate, I don't know if it would be a, uh, a mile radius or something like that, you know, of, of center point of the, of the interchange or...
And let me, I think I might be able to agree with that.
Acreage-wise, however you want to do it. I mean...
If you look on the map, uh, you'll see at all those nodes, you'll have, there's ba, there's three little concent, concentric circles there on the, of the rings. You might see those? I believe the first one is a quarter mile, the second one's a half mile, and then the outer one's one mile. So, I mean, if you want us to kind of scale down the, uh, the areas to say maybe the half mile or something to that effect, or the quarter, I mean, that, that's kind of, kind of up to you. And if I could ask, the, the motion that you're making, and, and I know I may be speaking out of turn right here...
Well, we really need to settle this down, and I think we can right now before we actually make a whole most clean motion on the whole thing, so...
Okay. Is your motion also to...
Yeah, the circle needs to come in, and, and you said that first ring is a quarter mile?
Yes, and then a half mile, and then a, a full mile after that.
I hate to butt in, but I feel like we're kind of flying by the seat of our pants right here. I like to give staff time to adjust this, and let us look at it, see some maps. Because we'll be back here in two weeks, or over there in two weeks, we could always... A larger scale, and actually look at it instead of just making a...
And actually put the roads in it where we can actually see what we're talking about.
We'll meet again in two weeks, we have the public hearing now, we could make whatever motion we're making tonight in two weeks, could we not?
You could. Now, let me, let me just say this, we will not be advertising as a public hearing at the next, because we, there's a statutory requirement that you do thirty days. Now, you've had two public hearings now. So if you're happy with the tweaks at the next meeting, I don't see any reason why you just couldn't move for adoption at that point. But I just want you to understand that it won't be, there'll be a public meeting, and people will be more than welcome to attend. But it won't be a, a public hearing like we're having tonight.
Yeah, I'm quite aware of that, and I don't mean to step on Commissioner Sanders' toes who's trying to make a motion here, but I want to see it before I send it on.
Steve, you draw your motion. You draw your motion?
Yes, yes.
I've got the luxury of seeing it when it gets to the commission too, which, which some of this body doesn't. But I'd like to see a definition exactly of what we're sending on, and, and so I'd rather take the time to do it right.
We can certainly do that.
And I know you keep on getting everything pushed out.
So we can look at it in two weeks, at our next, at our day, day meeting?
We can do it at our day meeting, yes.
Yeah.
Well, if, if we could make this suggestion in, could we see these road names better, as we've said?
Yes.
And then if you could scale that to, you said the interstate is a quarter, then it goes to a half, and then it goes to a mile?
That's correct.
All right, a half, a half mile?
Half mile, okay.
Yes, and then, like eight forty, that's not lined up in number, Jefferson Pike and eight forty?
Just kind of center that one down.
It's not actually lined up with Jefferson Pike, or excuse me, yeah.
Eight forty and Jefferson, yeah, Jefferson Pike, you're right.
Yeah, Jefferson Pike and eight forty. It's on up the interstate as far as the center point. So it needs to be moved down, lined up with eight forty and Jefferson Pike, as far as the center. And it'd be the same way then on...
You need to realize you're dealing with core property right there on a...
On a, on a good bit of that, right, that area, general area is core.
That's going to knock some of it out, yeah.
It's core property, so that's, that's a moot point, you're not going to develop it.
And so then your Eps Mill will be the same, and then your Ammerville Road will be the same?
It could be fairly good size, long as it's not a budding residential property, you know, we just make sure.
These people's property. Okay, Mike?
It would appear to me that we need to cut it down on the east side, maybe into the north some. And, and you've got some more commercial stuff on the west side over there, and that's part of what Mr. Sims was referring to, I think. That would probably be more suitable based on what's already there, and keep that east side a little smaller. I think there's some natural boundaries there, because the river almost comes up and hits Jefferson Pike, right past the Hayes property, and that, that would be a natural place to cut it off, maybe.
Okay, any other, any other comments, anything that we want to look at next to, yes, sir, Ms. Phelps?
Mr. Chairman, I, Mike and I were sitting back here trying to bite our tongues not to say anything. But this committee that was put together and worked really hard on this plan, had to put those nodes someplace. And they've been communicating all along that the perfect place to put it is on that highway structure, that infrastructure that's available there. And no matter where you put it, there are going to be some residents just like these ladies here, that's going to be upset, no matter where you put it. If you were to take it all out there and put it someplace else, there's going to be another whole set of neighbors that are out here fussing about that. We could cut that thing down to where it's almost a small blue dot that you can't even see up there. But would that suffice what this comprehensive plan is trying to accomplish thirty-five years in the future, or twenty-five years in the future? The answer would probably be no. And we could scale that way back, and twenty years from now, an entirely different planning commission and county commission could come in here and expand that, just with a single vote, if I'm not mistaken.
That's true.
So that's what Doug has been trying to say, and that's what I've heard him say, is that that's just a long-term comprehensive plan that can change next year, five years from now, or ten years from now, depending on what we want to do. We can scale that back, and I think that's probably a really smart thing to do, especially out in Mona. But that's, doesn't mean that twenty years from now, somebody's not going to come in here and re-change that whole plan because of the infrastructure that's available out there. So I, I'm on board with scaling this thing back, but, but that's not going to protect those people that have brought that rural area up, because we've heard it for, Steve, how long have we heard it, for twenty years? Not my neighborhood, not my neighborhood, not my neighborhood, got to go someplace, it really does. And those areas, we've been talking about for two years, that's where that type of growth is probably going to go. Once again, we can help them out, I think, quite a bit. But that doesn't mean that twenty years from now, or twenty-five years from now, that whole area won't look entirely different, or that map won't look a little bit, the blue on that map won't look a little bit different than what it looks tonight, or maybe even a lot different than what it looks like tonight. As Commissioner John said a minute ago, he probably won't be around twenty years from now, and there's a good chance I won't be around twenty years from now. But, but that's what we're trying to do, is to look that far in the future, and give residents an opportunity to look at, at what our community may look like in the future. At least a plan, there's a plan out there, and, and I think that the committee's just done a, a great job, and have made adjustment after adjustment after adjustment. I'm ready to move with it, but if we do need to tweak it a little bit, especially those blue areas, I'm, I'm all in for that. But we don't need to continue to put the thing back and back and back and back. I think we need to move on it, and if we can move on it in a couple of weeks, I'm all in. Especially if Doug, you and your staff can, as Mike was saying a minute ago, can, can get it on one side of the highway, and maybe, maybe let's start off there and see where that goes. And Mr. Gamble was saying that it would be good to put a node out in the Christiana area, out in, out in that, and maybe the other side of Christiana, out in that area, and there's nothing to prevent that from happening in the future as well.
That's correct.
So everything could be tweaked, and everything could be developed, but these are just guidelines. And, and I think the, the long-term land use plan is something that we've been working on for a long, 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 long time. And what we do know right now is that things need to change. And we're not ever going to make everyone happy, it's just no way to do that. But we've got to make decisions that we think are in the long-term best interest of everybody, everybody. Which means that there's going to be some folks that are not happy. Let's shrink the blue, okay?
Yes, sir.
But just kind of be warned that twenty years from now, it may be that big again. It may be, and if our community continues to grow, it may be that that's where it grows, maybe.
Okay, thank you, sir. Rhonda?
Doug, I've worked with, minimally, but I've worked with mapping software before, and I know sometimes certain mapping software just has limitations. And so I'm curious if in your conversations with the, with the consultants, if you might not find out why and how, you know, certain things are, you know, placed where they're placed. Because like, for example, as you look at Area Seventeen, you know, out towards the Ammerville Road area, you know, it's not center placed, you know, either. I mean, your, your concentric circles are, you know, spread out, but then the purple is, you know, shaded heavily north. And so I don't know if they took into account other development that's already out there. I, I don't know why things got placed as they did. So I'm just thinking, as, as we're going to blow it up, and look at it in greater detail and greater scrutiny, we might need to know, are some of these issues just simply software issues, and not so much, you know?
Right, well, the, and I'm going to qualify this by saying I'm not an expert in the mapping software that was used. This land use model was done with a program called Community Viz. It's a program that the Nashville Area MPO has put a lot of resources into. Actually, a lot of the character areas and things that you're seeing on here, the designations came right from the data that we had given the MPO. So they were working with a lot of the data that was already provided to them, again, from, from the, the MPO in Nashville. I can't really speak as to exactly how the program works, except that they use certain factors as far as the zoning, the, any land use maps that may be out there, to come up with the, the base map. And then they kind of went by what are called measures of effectiveness, kind of looking at it from a standpoint of how close is it to a school, how close is it to infrastructure? I mean, there were, the list is in the, the document, the different characteristics they used. And the areas were rated based on how they met those criteria. And that's kind of where the nodes and everything came up. But, I mean, but I agree, some of this, yeah, when you look at it, you know, the, the purple area, as like you said, the Ammerville Road, eight forty-one, kind of not exactly centered on Ammerville Road exit. But those are things that I think, you know, we have the, the information now from the consultant, that we can manipulate the data on our own. Actually, this map that's on the screen before you, was actually a map that our mapper did, based on the data that was submitted to us from our consultant. So the map that's in this, the, the book, was done by the consultant, but this was a, was a creation of our, of our mapper, Mr. Eric McMillan, and he did a really good job on it, I think. But just saying that, I think when we blow them up, kind of like what you're talking about, maybe have a, maybe we'll look at it, maybe doing it two sheets, or maybe four, we'll just see what, what we get out of it, how good it looks. You know, we may be able to, to make some recommendations as to how those areas are centered around those nodes. So we'll, we'll take a look at that as we're tweaking it, you know, based on what Mr. Sandlin was, was saying a little earlier.
Right, because I'm perfectly comfortable treating this as a concept map, and not...
Right.
You know, a brick and mortar map, I'm perfectly comfortable with that. But given that, we may want to consider adding a footnote, so that anyone who looks at this map, or anybody who sees it online, will, will understand that it is just a concept map, and it is not black and white and stone.
Right, not meant to be parcel specific.
Yes.
Right, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anyone else?
Just one more comment, Mr. Chairman. That, that couldn't really be developed a lot out there without proper utilities.
That's correct, that's correct.
And there's, we're not even close to proper utilities out there for that to, for that to grow.
That's correct. Yeah, a lot of this, a lot of the areas that you're seeing out there, again, that's why this is really what we're, we're calling our future land use map. We think as time goes on, that these areas have the potential to develop in these manners. But understanding, right now, like you just said, there's probably no way they could develop that way. You're not going to see any kind of really large-scale development around Mona right now, because the infrastructure simply isn't there to accommodate it. And I mean, the same goes true for Ammerville Road. We, we do see that the Eps Mill Road interchange now, that, that's a little bit different situation, because we know the sewer is out there, that has more potential, even today, for that to happen. But those other two, is, I mean, you're, you're absolutely right.
What water district is servicing that area right now?
Which, which one? I think, and I may have to defer to Ms. Wood, but I think CUD does have a...
It's Smyrna?
Yeah. And when you start getting up to where the racetrack is, when you start getting up to where the racetrack is, up in that area, that, that switches to Gladeville up in that area. I don't know where the exact line is, but, but it does switch to Gladeville as you get closer to the racetrack up of...
They're having talks of different proposals within the last few years, to pull sewer to Ammerville Road from Smyrna, and also talks about pulling sewer to eight forty from Smyrna in both directions. And either one of those projects, if they were to happen, would be just a bombshell dropped in those...
Yes, I mean, we actually, I mean, as planning commission may recall, it's been probably a year, year and a half now. We were looking at a, we, we had a, a meeting, just kind of an introductory meeting to a, to a development off of Ammerville Road, Burtonob Road, that area, Independent Hill Road, which is exactly what they were going to do. They were proposing to extend the sewer all the way from Smyrna down to that property. Now, that, that project really became more victim of the economy than anything, but, so that, that's been withdrawn. But, I mean, but you're right. I mean, that, that was one of the concerns we had about it from, from a planning staff standpoint, is, you know, the development was nice, we liked it, but what happens, I mean, you've got it, the sewer all the way, you know, three, four miles down the road, what happens between there and the Smyrna town limits at that point? And, you know, this plan can help us in, in that regard, so...
Okay, anyone else have a comment? Steve?
We don't have a motion on the floor, do we?
No.
I'm going to put one.
You're going to put one.
Bring it back in two weeks at our meeting, with these things right here tweaked, into the half-mile radius, lined up with what we just talked about. And I believe that's it, on what's been discussed tonight.
That's what we'll do?
Yes, going to add a two thirty-one node, get with these two guys that, and we'll look at that in two weeks also.
Yes, sir. And well, probably a good idea if Mr. Gamble could be at the, the meeting, and I don't think it was just Mr. Gamble, have them come to the meeting, it's at nine AM.
We're going to look at it, if we can, y'all can get together and add one in there, bring it to us in two weeks. That's my motion.
Do I have a second on that motion for discussion?
I have, I have a question. Are we looking at, say, maybe south of Rock Springs Road, is that what we're thinking there?
Are you talking along on...
On two thirty-one.
On two thirty-one south?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I don't really have anything in mind at this point.
I think it'd be north of Rock Springs Road.
We'll, we'll take a look at that, and we'll bring back some...
And the reason I ask, we've approved several things, you know, as you top the hill, past Rock Springs Road there, that's the reason I was wondering.
Chris John, no, right there. Yes, sir, Ridge?
I don't know if I should say this now or not, but if you, if you start adding to this, should it not go back into public hearing mode? I can understand shrinking something, but if I lived on two thirty-one, and you plucked me in purple, then I'd like to have my say-so.
That's, I mean, it's probably a good idea. Now, understand, at the same time, that again, statutorily, we have to advertise for thirty days.
Let me go just a little bit further with that.
I'm sorry?
I said, let me go just a little bit further with that. I'm sat here and listening, and of course, and this is probably going to be a dumb question, but what is it? I mean, what is the map actually for if we're going to use it, and I've heard you say, you know, just because it's purple don't mean it's going to be purple, or, you know, it's not going to get that big. But it'll be, if we're going to use it as planners, as a tool to say, okay, we're going to allow something to go in that purple node because it's purple, it'll be easier for me to go along with that if it is purple. But at, at the same time, what if it's something that wants to come down, like Will brought up a minute ago, Soft Springs Road and eight forty? What have we really done with this, other than affected, we've changed the whole county from R-15 to these different nodes? What have we really done with this?
Well, yeah, and first of all, let me, let me just clarify one thing.
Doug, let me, let me address this motion. We've got a motion. Do I have a second for that motion?
Clarification, a quick, would you, would you say one more time what the, the distance for the rings are?
The first, the inner rings quarter mile, the second middle rings a half, and then the outer rings a mile.
And the current motion says that you're going to reduce that down to the half a mile range?
I believe that's what Mr. Sandlin had requested, yes, sir.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Can I ask Steve, can I ask Steve to clarify? Steve, would you amend your motion and say, leave it up to the staff to say, you know, if they can go a mile, if it's logical to go a mile at one point, and a half mile at the other, to let them draw it where they think it's logical?
If, if we have, like you said, the larger scale maps, it might be, it'd probably be a whole lot more helpful to have that.
Mike, I think, I think we can leave the others alone, and just do nineteen into the half mile. Leave the other two, I mean, we haven't had any, this was our public hearing, we hadn't had any comments on it, or, you know, it's all been worked out up until this point, or at least they wasn't here tonight. Go to a half mile on this one, you've got the core surrounding it anyway, on, on two sides, so it, it's going to narrow itself down right there to get into a compromising state, I believe, just that one area in nineteen, in a half a mile. And it's lined up.
Rich, you'll go answer your question in just a minute. Doug, have a second on this motion now.
Does that Christiana node include in that motion, Steve? Can you kind of point out where that would be?
Be, Doug, with your pointer, yeah, about where it would be.
Can you see where the Christiana node is? Yeah. Okay, well, Doug, Christiana node, sorry, Christiana node is right, that that's what this node is here. This is Christiana, this is Fosterville right here, and that's Midland, right there. Of course, that's Eps Mill Road. But two, this is two thirty-one, coming down here like this. So you're, I guess you're talking somewhere in between here. I guess it's kind of what you're referring to.
All right, would you go back up to the Mona?
Mona, I'm sorry, yeah, the Mona Road, that's this one right here.
Okay, then I, I see, I see Bullseye, and I see the second ring, what you're telling me is the half mile ring. Show, show me what the one mile ring is.
The one mile, it's hard to see, but it's on the edge of the purple area, right about in here.
So basically, if you shrink down to the half mile range, you're eliminating over fifty percent of that area?
Yes, sir.
But, but we can't do that?
That's, that's this inner ring, the second ring right here.
Well, let the people who decided that want to be there, we can't just arbitrarily shrink that down to a half a mile range?
It's because we feel like it. That's crazy. And yeah, let me, let me just, let me try to, just to point out again. I don't believe, and I, and I've, I know I've said this, but I'll say it again. I don't think that every single property in that area, even if it's left the way it is right there, I don't think you're going to see every single property develop in that way. And this map is not going to replace the zoning process, okay? Any rezonings for property, quite frankly, when we get to the zoning map, the, you know, the zoning ordinance that we're working on right now, and we get to the map phase, I do not anticipate that area, or even Ammerville Road area, coming in with just a, a large amount of office park zoning, or commercial type zoning, if any. Because at this point, and as, as the lady spoke a little earlier, I mean, and I agree, it's mostly residential out there right now. This is just understanding and identifying the fact that this... This is just understanding and identifying the fact that this close to 840 and Jefferson Pike, we are probably going to see commercial-type development. We're probably going to see employment-type development out there. Is it going to get as far as a mile away? You know, who knows? I don't think it's going to happen anytime soon, because as we talked about earlier, there's no infrastructure out there. But the zoning map, when it's done, you know, even changing it, if we do change it from R-15 to something else, at this point, I don't anticipate that being changed to an industrial zone to encourage development that couldn't be supported there anyway. I think at this point, even in these heavier employment nodes and some, even some of these rural nodes, these are probably going to remain at a more of a different type of base zoning. And as time goes on and development starts coming into these areas, those developments are going to have to be brought to you for your consideration. There'll be a public hearing like there is right now. So it's not that these folks are just going to wake up one day and there's going to be new construction occurring outside their home. They're going to have notification of these things. So I just want to make sure that that gets out there. Everybody understands that.
Okay. Hold up here. We've talked about the same thing about 20 different times, and we've said the same thing over and over and over. You had a motion. I think your motion's going to die for like a second. Do I see a second? Do I hear a second? Richie, you had a question a minute ago, about 10 minutes ago. Do you remember what your question even was?
Just, let's finish this.
All right. Well, it's your district, it's your district we're talking about.
We talked earlier about not flying by the seat of her pants and trying to make a decision on the fly here, give the staff time to come back, and shrink some of that node. And now we're back talking about a motion that has specific parameters to it, a half a mile. That's exactly what I didn't want to do, is say a half mile. Let them look at it, get us a map, and bring it, bring us a, I thought they had a pretty good idea of what this body was talking about, was going to bring us some, a scale back and stuff in two weeks and stuff. So I hate to sit here and start saying a half a mile right now.
My motion fails, so...
I know. So I don't, that's why I didn't like your motion. And I, and I agree with Richie 100%. If we start adding a node, which I would be perfectly fine with a node out of Christiana, if it'd been on that map the whole time, through these public hearings, through the meeting at CUD and all, but there's somebody who lives wherever that node's going to land, and they've looked at that map, and there wasn't any purple right there. And for us to go back and start adding a node with no notification to those people, that's, that's not right. That's just totally wrong. So, so I think we all just let the staff go back and do the stuff we talked about earlier, and not add any more nodes unless we're ready to start back over public hearing.
Yeah, and let me, let me make this, let me make this, go ahead.
Just real quickly. That's where I disagree, because there's already a node happening. It's being talked about to length, not just a little bit. This ain't, this ain't a whim, like you said, two people coming up and saying, hey, I think you need to put one here. It's already going on. It's already being talked about with the city, it's already being talked about with the county. And so, you know, this is right here, is an area where one should be placed at, and that's proper planning by putting the node in where it needs to be and adjusting these others. And that's what this is all about, that's what the public hearing's all about. So we're not pulling something out of the hat here tonight and changing something. You adjust to public hearings and what the people are requesting, and you go from there. That's why we have public hearings. So if, to me, I think you can adjust this in two weeks and bring it back to us and look at it like I asked, and talk with these folks right here in trying to be able to place a node in there. If it's not going to work, then you don't bring it back to us in two weeks, and then we don't have to redo a public hearing. But yes, you are right, we do need to do a public hearing if we're going to put another node in there. I'm not saying that. You've got to have that, that goes along with it. But we've come this far, and this is going to be something that's going to be looked at for years and years to come, and you're going to flip out this comprehensive plan, you're going to flip open this map. If it's not in color right there, this is what it's going to be. So I don't think another month, another 30 days or 45 days is going to be a problem on everybody being happy, happy, joy, joy. So that's, that's what I'm asking staff to do, and I didn't mean to interrupt you, but...
No, I was just going to suggest...
Now I'm setting my pace.
I just was going to suggest, kind of along, I guess, what I think what I hear Mr. Jordan saying, is rather than say, you know, specific amounts, just defer it for two weeks, let us come back with the larger maps. And then, I mean, a lot of this, we could probably work out, you know, and quite frankly, and we all know that the mezzanine meeting room's probably better suited for this kind of discussion than, than, than what we're doing right now, just because of the acoustics and everything. But, I mean, if you want us to look at some specific things, we can, but, I mean, maybe not lock us into anything. We can just present to you what we, what we, you know, what we think will work, and if you guys want to tweak it from there, fine.
Is everybody okay? Yes, sir, yeah?
Let me, let me give this a shot. I move that we endorse this concept just like it is, and that you bring back an adjusted, is that purple? Since I'm colorblind, I've been calling it blue all night, I guess. But adjust those purple concepts that would meet some of the objections from some of the spectators here tonight that have made comments. But I move that we endorse the concept with, and look at an adjusted map, adjusting the purple nodes in two weeks. And that will be at our 9:00 AM meeting.
That's correct.
Let's see.
Do you add it?
No.
Okay. Have a motion. Have a second. Discussion on that, Steve?
What does that do? That don't do anything. It says, it says you got a good plan, but we're going to adjust it. All we're saying is adjust it, and then let's vote on the plan.
Steve, what I'm trying to do is get us off square one. In December, we reported it to January, January reported it to February, in February, here we are in April. I want us to go on record that says this is what we like, with these minor adjustments. And we'll look at those minor adjustments and vote on them. So just to endorse the concept.
You're not necessarily approving the plan, at least that's, as I'm hearing you, you're not approving the plan, you're just saying you like what you see, however, you're understanding that there probably needs to be some tweaks to it, if I, as I hear you.
That's right. We endorse the concept, and they can tweak the purple areas a little bit. And we'll vote on that in two weeks, which will be at our 9:00 AM meeting.
Okay. Motion? A second. Call roll, please.
Rhonda Allen?
I'm not clear on what endorse means. I need to know what I'm voting on.
Take the motion? Just take the motion?
Does endorse ascend it, endorse it does ascend it on to the county commission, doesn't it?
We're just, we're endorsing, we're endorsing the concept.
If I, if I can, let me, let me just have the floor for just a minute, Mr. Chairman, if I could, about this, this whole, the process and how that this, this works as far as adoption goes. The planning commission has the statutory authority to approve the comprehensive plan, okay? There is no requirement, although it is an option, to move it forward to the county commission. I mean, it can, the plan can stop right here at the planning commission level. Now, if we do bring it to the county commission, the county commission does have the authority to adopt the plan. If the county commission adopts the plan, the recommendations and the findings of the plan become binding. That means any land use decisions that are made at the county commission level, and at the planning commission level for that matter, have to be consistent, and the BZA have to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, okay? That, but a lot of what they call concurrency is kind of the buzzword for that. Basically saying, once you, once the county commission adopts it, this becomes a binding document. Now, that's only if the county commission adopts it. When the planning commission, if they just adopt it, and it doesn't go any further, or if it does go further and the county commission decides they don't want to adopt it, we can still use this as a guide, but it doesn't have that, that force of law behind it. So the county, the planning commission does have the authority to adopt the plan.
My motion is trying to get us off of square one, and not for us to come back in two weeks and discuss a whole another set of issues, and then turn the thing down. What I was hoping to do is to get us to say, you know, you like this plan, and let's just tweak it a little bit. I don't care where it goes to the county commission or not, I really don't, because I'm a county commissioner, okay? And I really, really don't care. If we can get it down here, I'm that school early there.
So as I hear you saying, and then, correct me if I'm wrong, but is what I hear you saying on your motion is you're not moving for adoption of the plan at this point, you're, basically what you're saying is you like the plan, you do think it needs some tweaking, you want to see the tweaks, and then at the next meeting, move for adoption at that point? At least, is that, is that what I'm hearing, at least?
Exactly what I said.
Okay.
Rhonda, did you catch that? Did everybody catch that?